See, Kev?
Yeah.
Kevin.
All set? Good evening and welcome to the Town of Wareham Board of Selectment meeting of October 10th, 2017. We actually opened the meeting at 6:06 PM and went into executive session for reason number three under the open meeting law to discuss potential litigation. Can we have another roll call, please, just for the public record?
President, Selectmen Titlebaum, Selectmen Slavens, Selectmen Whitesides, Selectmen Scasiotti, Selectmen Troppiano, Town Administrator Derek Sullivan, Town Council Rich Bowen is out of the building right now but back shortly.
Okay. Let's see. Pledge of Allegiance. Chief Walsh, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Announcements. Selectmen Troppiano?
No, I'll... no, no, I'll pass.
Okay.
Nope.
Selectmen Scasiotti, Selectmen Whitesides?
Oh, yes. You're going to talk about pink patches, so I'm not going to talk about pink patches. However, we all have one. Hold it up. Okay.
Sorry.
Also, the Wareham Police Department is teaming up with police departments across Plymouth County to take part in a month-long toiletry drive in October to recognize Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Toiletry items sought include toothbrushes, toothpaste, mouthwash, floss, shampoo and conditioner, combs and brushes, deodorant, disposable razors, feminine hygiene products, diapers, soap, lotion and lip balm. These will be donated to local agencies that provide services for survivors and family members affected by domestic violence. A collection box is at the Wareham Police Department and at the Wareham District Court throughout October. Wareham Core Picket fundraiser. Core announces that it now has gift certificates available on its website, warehamcore.org. The certificates may be downloaded for anyone wishing to buy fence pickets that can be engraved for the Lopes Playground rebuild as a gift for any occasion or for the holidays. Wareham Core is selling the pickets for $40 each and they can be engraved with your name, your children, child children's name, grandchildren, friend, family member, loved one, et cetera. When the rebuild is finished in fall of 2018, the playground will be surrounded by a picket fence of 500 pickets, or probably more, each one created out of 42 recycled milk jugs. The color of the plastic wood is cedar and the wording is dark green. Wareham Core Spaghetti Supper. On November 18th at 6:00 PM, there will be a spaghetti supper at the Redmond Hall, 758 Main Street. Tickets are $20 and can be purchased at the OBA office, the Gallery Consignment Shop and by contacting lobesplayground@gmail.com beginning October 19th. Don't Trash Wareham completed its fall coast sweep. Volunteers cleaned up Little Harbor, onset and Shellpoint Beaches and Swift and Swift's Neck Beaches. Overall, there were a total of 73 people volunteering. I have blablabla mouth today. Seventy-three people volunteering. Don't Trash Wareham would like to thank those volunteers for their support and hard work, picking up a total of over 160 pounds of trash and debris. There were also people who went out on days not scheduled for that and DTW would like to also recognize them. There was an increase in cigarette butts at onset and Little Harbor Beaches with a slight decrease at Swift's. Cigarette smoking is banned by the Board of Health on all town beaches, parks and playgrounds. The second most frequent items picked up were food and candy wrappers, cups, containers, et cetera. Small pieces of plastic which easily wash into the ocean were also abundant. Notable, since there is a bottle deposit on most bottles and cans brought to the beach, we find few of them overall. It should also be noted that most bottles and cans we do find are liquor and beer bottles and beer cans, now allowed on the public beaches. We are still awaiting the results of the nip bottle deposit bill as we did find several nips, as always. Library. The Friends of the Wareham Free Library are participating in Dolly Parton's Imagination Library and are seeking donations. For $25, you can sponsor one child to have one hardcover book mailed from the child's home every month for a year. Children must be residents of Wareham and must be in the age from birth to their fifth birthday. Please support one or more children. Donation forms are available to the library or send your checks to the Friends of the Wareham Free Library Post Office, Box 735 Wareham. Program supports early childhood literacy and helps our children become reading-ready for kindergarten. Registration for qualified children to participate in the Imagination Library will begin at the Main Library on Saturday, November 4th from 10:00 to 2:00. The special kickoff event will feature the Pitter Patter puppets who will perform... Pitter Patter puppets perform at 11:30. Registration forms will also be available at the Main and Spinney Branch Libraries. The October Book Sale dates, Tuesday, October 24th, 5:00 to 6:45. Wednesday, October 25th, 10:00 AM to 3:45. Thursday, October 26th, 10:00 AM to 6:45. Saturday, October 28th, 10:00 to noon, and there are no book sales in November. All proceeds of the book sales are used to purchase books and materials for the library. Bee Week Celebration, October 14th from 10:00 AM to noon at the Main Library. The Story of My Bees begins at 10 and includes puppets, dancing and music, and Peter will be wearing a bee uniform. At 11:00 AM, Tales from the Hive, A Morning of Beekeeping with Photography and Beekeeper Renee Ricciardi. It's also a raffle to benefit the library with gift certificates from Nocrelli's, Mizilli's, Olson's, Bailey's, Onset Bay Association, East Wind Seafood and Lindsay's. Tickets are on sale now at the library and prizes will be drawn at the event. And, the Erloin Letter. Sponsored by the Wareham Library Foundation, this play is a film noir spoof starring Peter Titlebaum, who has yet to see the script, but he's going to be Nick Bullet, Ace Detective. Right. Mary Bruce is the nightclub singer Troublemaker. The play takes place on Friday, October 20th at the Redmond Hall. Appetizers, desserts and a cash bar begin at 7:00 and the play begins at 7:30. Other notable performers include Gary Buckminster, yeah, Jackson Gilman, Queen Banda, Nicole Calvin and Michael Carlozy and Marcia Hickey. All proceeds support the library. Tickets are $25 and may be purchased at the library, Spinney Branch, Gallery Consignment Shop or from any of the victims of the play. Grumpy's 5K Cranberry Harvest Race returns for its annual walk-run family event on November 4th at 9:00 AM. The race honors Robert "Grumpy" Conway, a longtime AD Makepeace Company employee and nature photographer who died in 2010. Don't talk while I am. Proceeds will benefit the Cranberry Educational Foundation Scholarship Fund. The unique run-walk winds along a nature lover's trail through cranberry bogs of the AD Makepeace Company during harvest time. The race will take place in Tyhonet Village, 150 Tyhonet Road, Wareham. Register online at http://www.grumpy5k.racewire.com or at the advanced registration number pickup on Friday, November 3rd or on the day of the race at Box Mill on site. Each registrant will receive a T-shirt and be able to partake of a cranberry feast following the event catered by Harriet's of Marion. Unique cranberry-focused awards will be presented to winners at all age categories, both male and female. Grumpy's incredible nature-inspired photography will be on display during the post-race festivities. Wareham students are eligible to apply for the Foundation's scholarship. And finally, Readers Become Leaders starts on Sunday, October 15th at noon to 2:00 PM. Students walk down from Minnetonka School, down Minnetonka Avenue to Great Neck, turn right at the cemetery at Stillman Drive and back onto Minnetonka and it ends at the school. At each one of several stops, somebody reads part of a book to the kids. There will be several people out picking up trash on the route between now and then, so those of you who throw trash out, please stop at least the next few days so that we don't have to double pick it up. That's it. Don't get me going.
Okay. Wareham Historical Society, they have a program with Donna Turin. It's October 16th, 4:00 PM at the Methodist Meeting House. Donna will talk about life in Wareham's honed village from 1872 to 1927 on her family's little farm on land surrounding Harlow Brook. Join us for a wonderful journey back in time to the turn of the last century as Donna tells wonderful stories about her grandmother, maybe Bessie Jones, and life before the internet, cell phones and super highways. Mrs. Turin will share memorabilia, pictures, gingerbread made with her grandmother's recipe. Refreshments will be served after the program. Admission for members are free, non-members $2. We have another, I'm not going to say website, but basically we have Wareham Matters. We have another Wareham group that Nora Bickie has just recently done, which lists all the different events in Wareham, which we've never really had that piece before. Almost everything that Judy read off is on that, so I would suggest very strongly that people who are looking for what's going on in Wareham to go to that particular Facebook page and it gives you probably 15 to 20 items going at least a month out. It makes it a lot easier to find out what's going on and when.
So you're telling me you don't want me reading anymore?
No, you can read all you want to hear.
You can't hear him? Can you hear him out there? No?
You gotta get closer to the microphone.
Hello? Hello, hello, hello.
We got a dud. Hello, hello. Nothing? Do you want me to yell stuff out?
No, it's okay.
I don't think they... I don't think they're working. They say they're on.
Okay. Also, Makepeace had their big event this past weekend, the Cranberry Festival. Saturday is probably the biggest time I've ever seen there. They were saying there was at least 15,000 people there. I think there was more. The traffic was unbelievably difficult. I'm sure our police chief had a wonderful time with all the traffic backing up everywhere. It was really good to see the governor came, which was kind of a surprise. It didn't make for a mess either. And there were a lot of people from a lot of places, including out of this country, that came and really enjoyed just getting out in the cranberry bogs and making a mess like the TV commercial that you see all the time. So Sunday was a little more difficult, but again, it's great to see Wareham has what's considered one of the top 100 events in the country now. So you have to give AD Makepeace credit for what they've done with that particular piece. I think that's going to be... What did I get there? Wareham Village Association. Wareham Village Association has a scarecrow contest, October 15th to November 1st. Judging will be the weekend of the 28th and 29th of October. Oktoberfest Train, Saturday, 10:21, 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Trick or Treat is going to be Tuesday, 10:31 at 3:00 PM. Christmas Parade, Saturday, I believe that's the 2nd of December, at 3:00 PM. For any information, get ahold of Wareham Village Association to get details on that. Also, these events will also be up on that new website as I mentioned before. Yeah, let's take care of that piece there. Yeah, I think so.
Just for everybody's information, the parade will have a different route this year. It's going to start up here at Town Hall and go down Marion Road, down Chapel Hill and then take a right line to Main Street instead of starting up at Center Park. It's going to be coming this way. It'll be a little bit easier route for everyone. It'll help with the traffic. Actually, we noticed last year that there weren't so many people from CBS North, so we're hopeful that people will come up the hill and see the start of it as well. There's one more event. Cranberry Coast Concerts presents the Halloween Spooktacular. That's at Eastern Bank, 226 Main Street in Wareham Center. It's going to be from 6:00 to 10:00 October 28th, and there will be tapas from El Mariachi, a cash bar, and there will be a large all-star musical lineup. And tickets are $30 per person or $50 per couple and are available at the Gallery Consignment Shop and Music of the Bay. And you can also go on Facebook and just find Cranberry Coast Concerts and figure out where the online purchase outlet is as well. And that's all I have. You got one more?
I have one that wasn't really given to us. The onset Foursquare Church is doing a trunk or treat, and for those who don't understand, people basically load their trunk up with candy and stuff. Kids come by and you basically fill up their bags as they go. This will be on the 31st at Lopes Field at onset. Just so you know, they haven't sent us an announcement, but that's a fun time for everybody.
Yep. Okay, that wraps up the announcements. Citizens comments. Is there anybody who'd like to speak to the board tonight? Do we know why we have a lot of library trustees here tonight? Oh, you recruited people? Because we actually don't have any appointments on the agenda tonight, interestingly. That's typically... Well, that's pretty much correct. That's the order we set the agendas up in on a weekly basis, but yet we see nothing before us. But if you'd like to come up and talk to us while you're here, we can certainly take up the matter of the appointment next week.
Do you want to do Kevin first?
What?
Do you want to do Kevin first?
Well, let them do this and then we'll do Kevin.
October 10th, didn't make it.
Yep, you got it. Okay, yeah, your agenda's kind of weird. Well, why don't come on up and tell us who you are and why you're interested in serving? And we apologize that the actual appointing won't take place tonight, but... No, no. We'll remember what you said. Make it memorable.
I'm Deanne Bonner. I live at 98 Edgewater Drive in Wareham, and I am very interested in libraries. I think they are a center of opportunity in any community. And I think when I first moved here, I moved here a week before they shut the library down for a good part. I didn't have any internet access because our house was just being built and I had to go to the library to use it. And I literally would be limited to a half an hour because there would be people standing in line behind me waiting to use the computers. People do job searches, people do research, people do... Libraries are used for all kinds of things, but I think that libraries can be a center in a community for vitality, for growth, for a sense of community, for a sense of a really vital place to live. And I'm hoping to be part of helping the library come back to being a vital center for this community.
Thank you.
I'm Linda Jackson and I live across the street at 14 Morse Avenue. And I moved to Wareham 15 years ago. I lived 12 years enjoying the library very much. I noticed young people were there all the time. I attended... Young people were teaching us older people how to use the computers. I could use any library in the area. I love libraries. And then four years ago, I moved to Morse Avenue and from where I had lived earlier in Wareham, and I've just seen a terrific difference since then. I don't see the young people over there anymore. I can't get the books that I would like. I understand that there are no libraries in the schools, so where do these kids go if they need library books? I know everybody has computers now, but not everybody has computers. And I like books, and I hope that there are still some people on this planet that like books. And librarians. They're even better than books.
Okay, then. Well, thank you very much. We'll take care of the actual appointing next week, but I would like the record to reflect that...
Ask it questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
May I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Ms. Bonner, can you give us a little bit of background about yourself?
Yes, I am...
Because the application that you filled out would have asked for a page of, you know, tell us why you want to be...
And I did fill it out, so...
You didn't? We don't have anything?
I filled one out, too.
We don't have it in front of us. That's the whole problem. Okay, thank you.
I'm a relatively new resident. Moved to Wareham three years ago. My occupation is an academic. I teach social policy for people who are getting master's degrees from Boston University, and I have access to their university, but it pains me that we don't have a library here that we can use and that my neighbors and their children and friends can use.
Thank you. And may I ask the same question of you, Ms. Jackson? The question was, in that extra page of stuff, you know, why would you want to be...
I think I said to you what I wanted to say there.
Okay. And your background is in...
My background is I'm a curious individual. I was married for 35 years and lived in the Soviet Union, lived in Germany, lived in England, traveled all over the world. I love knowledge and I just, I feel that books are part of that experience. If you don't have the luck that I had to actually live in these countries, you can read about them. It's just fabulous.
Thank you. May I ask one further question?
Yeah.
How many vacancies are there on the trustees?
Just the two, these two have been.
Thank you. And I would like to make a comment. Every child in Wareham High School has the opportunity and a portal for the Boston Public Library. Every single child in the building, and they have had for several years. So they do have the ability to go online with one of the greatest libraries in the country, if not the world.
Any other questions from the board?
Online?
Yeah. Yes. I understand that, but to say that they don't have the opportunity to go online...
Physical... No, we didn't say they didn't have...
Well, we're not...
But I'm not... Yeah, so I just wanted to make that annotation.
Any other questions for these?
No. Thank you for stepping up.
Yes, thank you. And I would like the record to reflect that no fewer than three of the current trustees showed up, obviously in support of these two candidates. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we are going to, let's see, we'll go to Kevin first for the Pink Patch presentation.
Please.
Good evening, Chief.
It's not really a presentation. I just wanted to tell you real quick about the Pink Patch Project. Since October 1st, people in town may have noticed some officers wearing the pink patches, like on my shirt now, or the fact that other people in the public have a patch. It's a project that was brought forth to me as an idea by Officer Carl Baptiste, who told me about the Pink Patch Project, which is a nationwide initiative to bring public awareness to breast cancer and breast cancer research. And I thought it was an excellent idea. Departments from California to here are doing this Pink Patch Project. Many of them are doing it. And we came up with our own design of what should be pink on the patch, and I think it's a pretty good-looking patch. It is available to the public for $10, $10 each, and the donation is going to an organization we chose. We chose the South Coast Breast Health Center, and that serves people in the South Coast towns, including Wareham. And we thought that was a worthy place to donate hopefully a lot of money that is raised. And that's it. You can purchase them at the police station, or you can send in a self-addressed stamped envelope with a $10 check or cash to the Wareham Police Department in care of the Pink Patch Project, and we'll send it out to you. So we hope we get a good response from this. It's certainly a worthy cause and unfortunately is out there.
Okay. Thank you.
The second thing I want to announce is that on Saturday, October 28th, we have our annual drug take-back program in conjunction with the DEA and Covanta. It'll be from 10:00 to 2:00 at the Wareham Police Station, and you can bring all unwanted prescription medications, no shops, no needles and no medical equipment, just the medication. And across the country, a collection is made. It's tons and tons of unwanted prescription medication that doesn't go into our ecosystem and into the... or into the wrong hands on the streets. The other thing I was going to announce is Judy touched on it. It was the Domestic Violence Awareness Month. It's this month, and the DA's office has placed donation boxes in various towns, Wareham being one of them. Unfortunately, domestic violence is a major issue in this town, in this area, and they are collecting the toiletries. They're collecting toiletries especially, and any other small items that can be used by domestic violence organizations to hand out to people in need that are victims of domestic violence. So if you want to drop anything off while you're buying a pink patch, we're happy to see you at the police station.
Great.
That is it.
Great. Well, thank you very much for that update.
Good deal. Thank you.
Good stuff. Thanks. Okay, next up, presentation of certificate of appreciation.
Well, I get to write lots of things.
Are you actually going to read it tonight? You said you were kind of a mushmouth, so I'm just waiting for you to butcher this.
No, I am actually going to read it tonight. And in order to sort of set the stage, I want to read a little bit of T.S. Eliot's poem, "The Naming of Cats," which was the inspiration for the musical Cats. "The naming of cats is a difficult matter. It isn't just one of your holiday games. You may think at first I'm as mad as a hatter when I tell you a cat must have three different names. First of all, there's the name that the family use daily such as Peter, Augustus, Alonso or James, such as Victor or Jonathan, George or Bill Bailey, all of them sensible everyday names. There are fancier names if you think they sound sweeter, some for the gentlemen, some for the dames, such as Plato, Admetus, Electra, Demeter, but all of them sensible everyday names. But I tell you, a cat needs a name that's particular. And therefore, we have a certificate cat..." Get it? "...certificate of appreciation to Cat Jones." "The describing of cat is a difficult matter, but we have tried for good or for bader. Esther Egg might give you a clue for the very long list of what the cat do. Halloween Hannah is much too forthright. We know that her presence won't give you a fright. Katie Kayaki might be a good name for the woman who leads us off in a game. Sandy Castle is too good a clue. You'll all guess what activity children will do. Tonawanda Tempest has visited town. We're glad she didn't take too many trees down. Lola Lovebug is snug as can be because we all enjoy concerts for free. Chock full of fun is a terrible pun, but a name for dear cat and that sidewalk of fun. Diana Cat Crawl does give it her all. For the onset blues, festa vall. Siren Serena will sing for the boats. Priests bless them to make sure they all stay afloat. Lucy Illumi should be a good name for a wonderful woman who sang in a choir and has brought fireworks to an art much higher. Who knew she was game? In all sincerity and with thanks to your OBA team, the Board of Selectmen wishes to thank Kathleen M. Jones. A cat by any other name is still to be congratulated..."
A cat by any other name is still to be congratulated for her outstanding service to the town of Wareham's summer festivities."
Thank you.
Took her two weeks to come up with all that.
Huh?
Did it take you two weeks to come up with that?
No, it took me five minutes.
Very clever of you.
She's probably thinking all night and everything about it.
Thank you all. Good afternoon. Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you all. Okay, so now I've got my phone.
Yep.
Anybody who'd like for me to write a booklet or something, you know, like advertising something? No. Now we know.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Okey-dokey. I'm going to vote on the acceptance of a donation to the Wareham Police Department?
Yep. Police Department has received a very generous donation of $1,500 from the Ashley Fay Amato Memorial Fund. Marina Amato, Ashley's mother, has asked that we use these funds for transportation expenses. Our department encourages for the Plymouth County Drug and Alcohol Resistance Education Summer Program. This is an annual program our department participates in, which is 15 to 20 children from town who will be entering grades five and six, attending camp for one week in the summer. The program instructs children in respect, responsibility, leadership, risk identification, decision-making, and public safety awareness. We are very grateful to Marina Amato and the Ashley Fay Amato Memorial Fund for this donation. This is the second year we have received this donation.
Move that we accept the very generous donation in memory of Ashley. Second.
Okay, motion to accept the donation by Selectman Whiteside, seconded by Selectman Scasiotti, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0. Just for the record, Selectman Troppiano has left for the remainder of the meeting to go celebrate his daughter's 17th birthday. So that's a good excuse. Next item, confirmatory vote to authorize $80,000 in EDIC funds for Phase II Comprehensive Site Assessment for Tremont Nail Factory.
I'll move that we confirm the discussion that we had last week.
Yep. Motion to confirm our prior vote by Selectman Whiteside, seconded by Clerk Slavin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0. Let's see, continued discussion and possible votes on town meeting warrant articles. I think we're all set.
We're all set.
But it's on there just in case anybody wanted to reconsider a prior vote. Approved request for signs on town property by the Onset Four Square Church.
I'd like to thank this group in particular because they actually had put a sign out, and someone had done it ahead of time without the organization knowing, and they actually moved it down because it was on the bridge, which was nice when they realized there was an issue, and they took care of it. So they basically have the trunk-or-treat event on Lopes Field in Onset, and they want to put a sign up by the Toby Homestead in the front area there.
Yep.
Move to allow the placement starting today and ending the day after, a couple of days after the event, which is the 31st?
31st.
Okay, motion by Selectman Whiteside, seconded by Selectman Scasiotti, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0. Let's see, that gets us through down to 48-hour business. Selectman Scasiotti, do you have any? Selectman Whiteside, Clerk Slavin? I don't believe I do. Town Administrator Sullivan? Okay, time for the town administrator's report. Do you have nothing? Okay, Liaison Initiative Report, Selectman Scasiotti?
That's it.
Selectman Whiteside? Selectman Slavin?
I'll do this very quickly. Today was basically a meeting in Ashland at the Warren Center for the Mass Municipal Associations Board of Directors for policymaking for the 2019 year. We have some good news actually besides, the benchmark is what the governor uses for their budgets, and as everybody knows, we've been behind on the benchmark almost every month for the last year. Yes, dear. They can hear me now. And for the month of September, the benchmark was exceeded by $125 million. So therefore, for this particular year so far, we are above the benchmark, which means that there should not be any 9C cuts or any more cuts. The governor has been making cuts, and the Senate's been putting them back over the last few months, so hopefully this might be a good sign for us. We'll see how this works. I'll give more information as to what the final decision is for MMA going forward. Chapter 90 is one of the big items. The issue on the new zoning bylaw changes coming in was another issue with basically the town's losing control of some of the zoning bylaws, was something else that they would be supporting. It was an interesting piece coming up, talking about taking basically land that's not taxed, you know, properties, whether it's a nonprofit or anybody at all, and seeking to, for the town to see a revenue for those particular, what they call tax exempt lands. That should be a very interesting subject. That's about all for today.
Okey-dokey, I don't have anything. We have minutes.
Yep. Make a motion to accept the minutes of February 14th, 2017?
Second.
Okay, motion to approve the minutes of February 14th, 2017 by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Whiteside, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of March 21st, 2017?
Second.
Okay, motion to approve the minutes by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Scasiotti, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, unanimous, 4-0-0.
Motion to accept the executive session minutes of September 26th, 2017, and hold?
Second.
Second. Okay, motion to approve and hold by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Whiteside, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of March 21st, 2017?
Second.
Okay, motion to approve the minutes by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Scasiotti, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, unanimous, 4-0-0.
Motion to accept the executive session minutes of September 26th, 2017, and hold?
Second.
Second. Okay, motion to approve and hold by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Whiteside, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, unanimous.
Move to adjourn?
Yep.
Second.
All right, that's slow on the uptake tonight. Motion to adjourn by Selectman Whiteside, seconded by Clerk Slavin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0. Thank you, good night, Wareham.
Good night, Wareham.